All right, hold on. Ready?
All right, good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting of hamtramck city council to order. Today is June 25, 2024, at 7:11 PM. What the clerk called the rules, please.
You said 7:11, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Rafai, Councilman Sidman are absent, but we do have a call on.
Thank you. Could you please rise from the floor? I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the citizens of the republic, the republic's one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as it says for all. Thank you. Do we have any community announcements?
Can I announce something real quick? The election, um, obviously is August 6th. We did receive our ballots this week. We are still processing them, so we not, we will not be sending out ballots this week, but we are planning on sending them out next week. Um, but they are available. Um, we only have English right now. The Arabic and Bangla is on their way, so expect your ballots if you're an A V applicant. Expect your ballots in the mail within the next week or two.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we still have the same two on there. Uh, July 15th, the team wellness, um, team wellness will be out front. Uh, city hall screening, with screening truck, people can make appointments for the long-term COVID effects if they want. And then also on July 7th, the annual Hindi religious rally will be out front as well. Uh, flyers are up as well, if anyone wants to see them.
It's the July 10th, right?
Seven.
Seventh, seventh for the Hindi religious rally.
All right, any other community announcements? All right. Uh, do we have any, no, confirmations, presentations? No?
Okay.
Any additions or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman?
I'd like to pull the resolution D, D like a dog, from the consent agenda to the new business.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So, resolution D on the consent agenda is move to be resolution G on the new business. All right. So, we move to the public?
No, no, one moment, please. We have to move again.
Oh.
But just give me one moment, Chris.
Yeah, I'm waiting.
Bear with me. All right, I need a motion to?
I'd like to make a motion, resolution as amended.
All right.
I need a second, please.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, resolution D, the consent agenda is move to be resolution G on the new business. All right. Any more additions or additions? All right, so we move to public comments whenever you're ready.
Thank you so much. I have Habib Al Joffi, three minutes. Just make sure you push the button, please.
Hi, everybody. I'm talking about the language of the Arabic. Uh, I'm talking about the speed in the middle of the country. But the car in the middle of the country, I'm gonna make a lot of it. But the speed, I'm gonna tell you that I'm gonna tell you that. Because I saw that the speed was 70 to 75 miles an hour. But that is the biggest danger for the animals in the city. I'm gonna get a little bit of trouble. I mean, you can show them a little bit. I mean, you can show them, for example, space, that they added to the ticket. Or, you know, to tell the people that they're gonna have to pay. Because it's become a waste of time. The taxes, the government, we're gonna pay. There's no effect. The buses, the trains, they're gonna pay. But the basis, the basis, I'm gonna tell you that. Because I'm a father, and you're a daughter, and you're a son. The most dangerous thing that we're afraid of right now, is that we're afraid of not getting the car, or not getting the bus, or not getting the train. We're afraid of the speed. The speed, in fact, is criminal. So I hope that you take this into account. And if you want to be a person, you have to pay. I'm gonna give you thousands, thousands of dollars, thousands of dollars from the community. On the basis that you're gonna get the car, or you're gonna use any law, that the speed is increasing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, he's talking about speeding and reckless driving in Hamtramck. He's very concerned as a father of this issue. And he needs to, you know, increase the penalties for those who speed up and who drive recklessly in Hamtramck. He's in support of more severe penalties, and he wants to give the police more authority to punish them. So, uh, thank you, that's what, it's in our radar, and we always want to discuss this, but we always get distracted by other issues. But this is one of our priorities, and we will discuss it, inshallah, soon. And, uh, we'll come up with new rules that will put a limit to this issue in the community.
Thank you. Muhammad Islam?
Hello, good evening, everyone. Assalamualaikum. Actually, my name is Muhammad Islam, everybody called me Muhammad. So, I have a quick concern that about, I'm not a whistleblower, I don't want to be a whistleblower. I like to see a lot of new businesses here in Hamtramck, but not illegal businesses. Why I said illegal businesses, because I've been with the city for so long, and I know a lot of those codes and zoning and ordinances. How I know that? Because when I was a student in Lawrence Tech, Gary Zich was my professor, the mayor was here in 2002. And Gerald Deltof, he was the building director, labor and economy growth, and me and him, we did lots of those codes and zonings. And for that, even though the maps, he was divided into five sections, I colored it by my hand. So, all these five colors. That, my request is, before the Eid holiday, there was one of the store, Mr. Farad, he started killing lamb and sheep and goat, which was illegal. And I informed that to the building officials. I tried to be a gentle, I don't wanna be, but he still did it. That was two weeks ago, last council meeting I came, I told Monday, and I talked to a lot of councilmen as well. And everyone beware of that, and Mr. Farad still killed those animals here. Because if we have the illegal businesses like that, the mayor will look bad, city manager will look bad, also the clerk and everybody, the building officials, is gonna be looking bad. The city is gonna go underwater. Everybody in the stores, they will look for illegal things again. And of course, you guys know, they're big guys waiting for the marijuana shop. They can apply for marijuana, and we have to do that. Otherwise, if we don't follow the codes and rules and regulations, the city could get sued and more sued. And that's all I wanted to say. I don't, like I said, I love to be here, you know, I love the city, and we don't want any illegal business. And my final request, the building officials or the employees should not take sides of some businessmen because of their family member or because of their cousins. It should not be happening here. We've been grew up here, and we love the city, that's all I can say. Hamtramck is in my heart. I did a lot of those maps by hand. At that time, we don't have the computer graphics. I know all these codes by my hand, and a lot of those codes I remember with my heart. Because of Mayor Fa, I mean, sorry, that was Mayor Faust in Warren City. Mayor Gary Zich, then John Kowski, also I worked with, you know, last mayor, she made me planning permission as well. Thank you so much. You guys have a great day.
Thank you. And Mama Riff? Nope, you're good. Is it green?
No, it's red.
Is it green? Green, please. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we are protesting, council members, city manager, clerks, police chief, city clerk, Shane Sully, and all in audience, Assalamualaikum, and good evening to everyone of you. I'm Emma Maharif, founder and president of Tour Interpeterization, which operates nationally and internationally, Commonwealth Alliance for Tour Interpeterization, and Ministry of Speciality and Safety for Humanity. My community activities in Hamtramck started 26 years ago, and we're working with every one of you since then, and other Hamtramck residents. I thank you all, Hamtramck residents, for support in having Hamtramck clean city and safe. So far, we can say, we can say Hamtramck is a safe city. I would like to congratulate Chief Jermael for new employment with Hamtramck, city of, with Hamtramck Police Department. This is a great experience that he brought to us, and Hamtramck already was good, but I really admire him for connecting with the trade, police chief, and other local cities' police departments. And I see him in community meetings, coffee meetings with people, this is really that Hamtramck need to see. I agree with Brother Joffe, that he said about the reckless driving and high speeding in Hamtramck. That happens. Our police officers are doing a great job, I really appreciate them. I can see them almost on every corner, but happens that young guys get the good cars that they wanna test it, they wanna do drives on streets, they wanna start them. So, that makes speeding and reckless driving cause accidents and even death. So, I hope the police chief and his members of his force will take care of that. I would like to let you know that we have a, our fourth anniversary of marriage and family development. Be held on Zoom, July 12th, and I'd like to invite you, appreciate all of you for support till now and continue, this will be marriage and family customs, and I will let you know later on, the next meeting, some more about that. So, thank you very much, and God bless you.
Thank you so much. That's all for public comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so, we move to the consent agenda, and this is approved in a single motion with the discussion. We have approval of minutes from the June 11, 2024 regular city council meeting. Approval of invoice register dating the June 25, 2024. Approval of pre-approved expenditure dating the June 25, 2024. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we move to the old business. I'm gonna need the city managers here.
Yes, sir. Oh, chair. Pass out the drawing, we're coming here.
All right, so we have one item on the whole business, and that's the resolution 2024-63, approving award the 2023 alley construction services. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Second.
All right, discussion.
All right, Mr. Mayor, uh, we have exhausted this topic thoroughly. I have John and John to explain it a little bit more thoroughly here, um, and I will let them go ahead and explain what happened. A lot of it has to do with the fact that we were rushing like crazy to get these done last year, but I'll let them continue.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Public. Uh, so what we have in front of you is a summary of our 2023 alley reconstruction. It followed, which is consists of 11 alleys that were constructed, it followed the construction of 2022, where we did 10 alleys through there. If the council mayor remember, mayor and council, at the end of the 22 program, which wrapped up in the end of the spring of 23, which is not uncommon, uh, the contractor is looking to leave. We, uh, were in front of council for resolution 2023-79, which was dated 6/13/23. In, uh, no iden, no alleys were identified in that resolution, but there was a resolution to continue their contract at unit prices that kept, when they were low bid through there. That was alleys 1, 2, 3, and 4 that you have in front of you in the pink. Then, on August 22nd, 23, there was a second resolution to further, uh, seven more alleys, which consists of alleys 5 through 11 in this, uh, and the sheet in front of you. So what this is, is an administrative item to wrap up the construction for the first four alleys. We were working with, uh, the finance department at the time to see exactly how much funding would be available, to see which alleys were to pursue, but we did that so that we keep the contractor in the city to continue those alleys. And so for what the resolutions in front of you is for alleys 1, 2, 3, and 4 that you have on the drawing in front of you.
All right, so we, I also note that we ended up doing them out of order, which kind of goofed this up a little bit more, because we were trying to do, we ended up doing 1, 1, 2, and 3, and 4, uh, no, 1, 2, and 3 first.
That's correct.
And then we jumped around a lot, which kind of goofed up how we ended up paying these out. So, um, we got a little bit ahead of ourselves on this, but I can't, we went back and checked, and, and nothing was paid that shouldn't have been, nothing was not approved that shouldn't have been, and nothing was not paid that shouldn't have been either. So, uh, we're 100% above board on here. John DeAngelis did 100% check into this as well, and all three of us spent time in our office, along with Charles, that's also on the street, um, to verify all this.
I actually came in a little less.
Yeah, I came in less, yeah, and we actually worked with the mayor's office as well, through the finance, through there. And some of the order came about as, you know, when the contractor was more available, and when the alley was available to be used, and things along those lines.
Any questions? No?
Those alleys, excuse me, those alleys included, when the emergency was gone, does it include the alley in Kneve?
Oh, that's a different.
This is the, this is?
Yeah, this is from the last year.
From last year?
Yeah, we'll be up again.
How about, how about this year?
That'll be coming up.
That's a different resolution.
That, that kind of, the resolution behind us from that.
This is just cleaning up something from last?
Yeah, so this will finish this fiscal year of 23.
Yeah, the last year is when we include, they mentioned, this year's only one block from neighbor and carpenter, but they gave another one, where they go out from the last year's. We did this year's, one block alley, we neighbored to carpenter.
Yeah, we have an alley that we're building, we're doing right now.
Yeah, but you still left, you still have one more, like alley they did last year's.
Seven? Yep.
So everything from last year, I believe, is complete?
No, it's not complete.
From Nibel?
We hold, we hold this one.
From Nibel to Carpenter, you know, the West Joseph?
I hold from the last year's, not from this year. They did this year's, but they hold it from the last year.
You're talking about the West Joseph Campo alley from that? That, that alley's complete? It, it's completely done?
There are punch list items, who adds and adds to do.
Oh, you mean just?
I think, Mr. Councilman, I think Mr. Councilman tried to explain that it started last year, but they don't know about get finished.
Oh, okay.
They finished this year, but you guys trying to credit that is to get that this year.
I see. But it's actually not over yet.
And you're, the councilman's correct, yeah, because we carry over, because it's within a fiscal year, so we do some of the fall, then we come back and do some in the spring. I think we did 5, 7, 5, 9, and 7 in the, in the spring this year.
Yeah, it, it does get rather confusing, even for us.
I mean, we done, and, you know, credits to the community, we've done 20 alleys in two years. That's, I, I've been here a long time where we didn't do alleys for 20 years, you know, so to do 20 in 22 years is quite an investment.
And there's, there's another one, as the councilman had just noted, for approval tonight, so.
Nobody mentioned this about being paired block alley, just only, just been from my, my agenda from 2017. We buy this block alley from 2017, not going now. The mayor cannot accept my agenda, buy every year's 2, 3 block alley. That's when we show up. Look, using Campo and Colin, they look like Gucci. Nobody did that one, nobody mentioned for that one for a long time.
At, at council and mayor's request, we're rocking these alleys out, and?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the contractor, we, that's your interrifier mayor, but the contractor is ready to roll right to the next alley, if there's approval tonight through there. He's staying in town, and, uh, he's kind of got a rhythm with the community, I think, and is, uh, gonna do a good job. And so if we can keep a few more alleys that they're interested in, we can keep them in town before he demobilizes and goes to another community to work.
Yeah, so we mentioned to you that 20 alleys are done in two years, that's, uh, in the history of Hamtramck. You, in the past, you used to make plans, but you never had the resources to, to finish them up. But, uh, yeah, don't, don't take the credits back.
You're gonna take them with you back, because they did. We did a lot.
A lot of credit should be taken, candidly.
So?
I said, we're working together for Hamtramck, we look like Gucci.
Yes.
All right, so, um, any, any further questions? So, you can go?
Um, just can I rewind just a bit? Who motioned and seconded on this? I thought, so who seconded? Okay, thank you. Um, Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2024-63 approved.
Now, thank you, we move now to the new business. And we have first item, resolution 2024-67, approving the proposed professional service, uh, service agreement with Safe Built Michigan LLC. Who seconded?
Yes, I am second.
Mr. Mayor, I have John up to speak on this. Um, so as council knows, um, we have terminated our contract with McKenna. It was bound to happen. We did it a little bit faster than we had anticipated, uh, which is actually beneficial to the city. We are saving money by doing so. Uh, we have subsequently sought out and hired a clerk to replace the McKenna employee as a savings to the city. But we do still need to replace a couple of the services that McKenna was providing in the field. They are professional services. John has negotiated, um, I don't wanna say lucrative, but better deal than McKenna was offering us, uh, with Safe Built. John has also reached out to another company, uh, what was the name of the other company?
Carlisle Wardman.
Carlisle Wardman, uh, which was not necessarily, um, we believe capable of taking on this, this task, um, because they were hesitant to give us, um, an actual proposal. Safe Built is really the only one in a, in a real position to take this task on at this point, um, and we're thankful that they are available. They do have a history with us in the past, so they are familiar with our services, and we are comfortable, uh, and we do ask that the council approve them for a 12-month stint at this point. We do have plans to explore this even further, to see if we could save even more money for our residents moving forward, see what other maybe potential services we can maybe share with other cities to save money, uh, in addition. John, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, basically, most of, uh, the revenue that comes in to the building department code is for the rentals and the building side. Uh, that's the busiest side of the department. We don't have as many mechanical inspections for electrical, plumbing, and mechanical, so to bring on in-house staff at this time to do those three fields, um, I wouldn't advise it, because we need a couple backups in case we get sick and we need another inspector. This was too fast of a change to try to put that in place at last minute. So that's why I went with a 12-month contract for Safe Built. We were paying McKenna 100% of all revenue for mechanical plumbing and heating before, where with Safe Built, it's gonna be at 80%. And some of the planning, um, services that they're gonna do for us is actually gonna be done at a lesser cost than McKenna was. We currently, right now, just for the mechanical side, we just have mechanical inspectors in the city twice a week for about a half a day. I will look at, maybe possibly after a year, bringing people onboard as a part-time inspectors, not full-time, as part-time, and bring it all in-house, but I wanna get the merge totally complete, get everything running smoothly before I take that next step.
So McKenna used to take 75% of their revenue, right, in their contract?
They did on the building side, but on the, uh, the mechanic side, 100%.
So I still get many complaints, and today I heard complaints, that the department is giving hard time to some residents when they fix stuff. So the reason we, I, I've seen an email from McKenna requesting that we place them back on 100%, 75% of their revenue, or they will leave within 60 days. And then we discussed with the city manager, we rejected that offer because there was a lot of complaints from the, from the residents. On the way, because there was kind of secondary gain from whatever they do to increase their revenue. So, uh, now residents are expecting some improvement in the service.
Right, we still have McKenna employee there, which is, she's out on the 13th, um, so we still have McKenna employee there until the 13th. And we're paying for that at a, at a great cost, I believe it's 11,050 or 13,000 a month for that one employee. So, uh, that's why you see it at 80% now and not at 75.
So, so, so to some degree, we're, we're always gonna get complaints in this area. I mean, we're, we are never going to get 100% complaint-free building department, co-department, DPW. I mean, it, it, we're always going to get them. Someone is not going to be happy with the city for something. The best we can hope for is to be able to resolve those complaints swiftly, you know, so, I mean, as they come in, bring them to us, and, and I will say that, um, we, we jump on them pretty fast, and, and we are resolving them. Um, I would, the, the last two actually, Mayor, that, that you brought to me, um, in recent memory, um, and I'll, I'll mention one in particular, the, the new gas station build, it's moving along swiftly now. Um, they, we just had a meeting the other day, um, in John's office, and that one's full steam ahead. Another one that was, I'm not gonna say specifically where it was, but it's near the town center. That individual is now moving ahead as well. Uh, we've identified problems in that, and that one's moving ahead. But, you know, we, we're, there are going to be issues. It's, it's just, you know, we, we have a lot of people in the city building without the benefit of experienced contractors. We have a lot of people trying to do things on the cheap. We have a lot, we, we, we have a hodgepodge of multicultural people in this city that don't necessarily understand how things work sometimes. We're, we're doing the best we can with what we have, trying to get our community to move forward here, and we're just gonna, you know, do the best we can to sort through it. But as complaints come to you, Mayor and Council, bring them to us, and we'll fix them, we'll sort through them.
And to add on that, some of its statistics, which I've been paying close attention to, we're trying to avoid accepting anything from a resident that's not a complete pack. Because they, they wanna put in part of it and say, well, come back tomorrow, I'll give you the other part. That just, just gonna lead to total chaos, because did my office lose it? Did they not give it? They say they gave it, they didn't give it. So unless they have a complete pack, when they come to the counter, I'm not gonna accept it. Tell them what they need, but I can't accept it.
Yeah, I, I.
The other thing is, we need, we need drawings, a lot of them want to send electronic version, but we still have to have at least two printed copies, and they have to be legible, they have to be of the size, you know, you don't need a magnifying glass out to see what the height is on buildings and everything. So, a lot of that's gonna do with logistics and having a standard form that we're in the process, and actually, the lady that we hired as a supervisor office there has come from other cities, so she has a lot of this already enter. So we only hand these letters out and say, this is what you need, or this is what you're short, and we can just check the box and hand it to them, so that it makes the intake process a lot better.
We're, we're in a process of really trying to streamline and make things easier. There, there hasn't, I can't think of a problem that's come to us that we haven't resolved and got people on track at this point. So everything that comes to us, we sort through.
And this also allows us a closer opportunity toward, with CED. With, we're doing more, we have the capability of now approving more plants through planning in-house. We don't have to send out to Safe Built, we don't have to send out to McKenna, just gonna be the very big projects now. We have the capability in the city to do it in-house. And with, with the CED director working directly with me, I can recognize these problems a lot faster, which should, in return, make this whole process, that's the biggest complaint, is just taking way too long to get from the intake and to the permit. And I've noticed that, and, and some of the drawback was, is that we're sending it out.
So, yeah, just always remember, we are a division to improve our services, help people, you know, move through the process faster, that's, that's our goal, because more, more businesses, you know, more we get.
All the problems I bring into my little office, I sit at the table, work out with them.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman?
So, all the good thing we hear, bad thing we have to hear too. So, just manager mentioned, uh, this company also has the experience with the Hamtramck city, you guys, nobody was here. So there was the next, I think, I think Musa was here one time. There was the bad experience this company too. The complaint, what you have done, exactly same complaint is to come from this company too. So one manager hired them, another manager fired that company too. So, all about, so, uh, your, your DVD diaper have to be more strong. too. So all about, so, uh, your, your DVD type have to be more strong. And John is good. John has to look at that everything clearly, see, is people getting courage or, or, or the inspector doing easy way to do it, or given the, the element inspection fee? Those kinds of things, we have to.
Yeah, I'm aware, I'm really aware of the concerns when they were here before, yes.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sure, uh, if our client resident failed inspection, how much is the inspection fee?
Well, when you order inspection, you get the first inspection, you know, it goes comes with your thing, we go out and inspect it. If you get a fail and we got to come back, then there's a reinspection fee.
How much is the inspection fee?
Uh, it can be 50, it can be 75, depending on what item we're out there for. Uh, a lot of them are, a lot of them are 50, some are 75.
No, I'm, I'm just talking effectively. If the other company makes a different profit there, they might, I'm not sure, people complaining, they might have intended to pay him up.
Oh, correct.
To collect another, another fee. And this is completely on the resident, I mean, for the business owner also.
I haven't seen.
Watch those things.
I haven't seen, because I worked on both sides. I used to work for McKenna, um, you know, and I did pretty legit inspections. Generally, from what I've seen, at least with my department now, we totally try to work with them. A lot of times I'll get there and they're not nearly ready for an inspection. I say, you know what? Sometimes if I'm doing one closely, I said, just call and cancel this. And I'm not even going to say I was here because you're not ready and this is what you need to do. Because soon as they put it in the system, we're getting, we got to charge. Uh, sometimes I'll put it as a partial approval. Sometimes I go back on my own time. I say, hey, I'm going to approve you, but I'm going to come back. And away home, I'll go back and check it. So most of the community, if you talk to them, anybody that's doing any work in the city, I, a lot of times they go back on my own time when I was inspecting, and the same thing with Alan. He goes back and, and we don't, and we don't charge him.
We do that with our rental inspectors too. Sometimes we'll like pre-send them out there, just to kind of preview situations.
But once they tell us something and they don't do it, that's when we charge them.
And then plus, do you trust me when I say we hear about it when people get like reinspection fees because we'll hear the complaints? And if it starts getting excessive, we start questioning, well, what's going on here? And if there's funny business, you know, we start questioning, why are we out here so many times? And then that sparks, well, John's, John, go out there, see what's going on. And if John gets out there and it's like plain as day, why are we failing so much for this? Trust me, we're not, we're not going to tolerate these things.
Makes you feel, though, I know. And makes something.
This makes, uh, Mr. Mayor, quick question. Is it, you hiring for cold months, which one here? Unless the things doesn't go well, do you have option to surrender or like break the contract, or it has to be like?
We always have escape clauses in our contracts.
Yes.
All right, Hassan, good. So we can go.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-67 approved.
Thank you. Uh, just as a reminder, if, if any one of the public here wants to speak, I think some people are new for the first time here. They have to put out a card outside if they don't know, so they can speak in a second round of that. Because I, I see some new faces, maybe they're not familiar with the process. Uh, okay, we move to, uh...
Do you want to say it in Arabic? Are you okay, Arabic?
Yeah.
Some people did it last week and still forgot to do it this week. I plainly did it now.
Yeah, thank you. So next resolution B, uh, Resolution 2024-68, approving acceptance of the 2024 Wayne County Community Development Lot Grants Rewards.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is the annual CDBG, uh, acceptance, uh, it's 20,000 from Wayne County. Um, we accept it every year, um, if council would be so kind.
All right. Um, any discussion around that? All right, we can go ahead.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-68 approved.
All right, so, motion carries, and the next one, uh, Resolution 2024-69, approving the reconstruction of alley and conquer with the recommendations to extend Dominique Galileo Construction and Corporation alley contract.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I have the Johns here. This was at the request of Councilman Samiri. Um, and Hennessy prepared it and brought it forth. It'll be a general fund expense. Um, it was not in the general fund, so it would, or in the budget, so it would come out of the fund balance. Um, but, uh, it is a good alley certainly. Um, it is highly used and certainly in desperate need. Um, if the council so chooses, we can get it done for sure.
So our goal with the alleys is to cover first the commercial streets, which we did, uh, most of them actually, Joseph Campo Corner, Hallbrook, and now, uh, we are left with, uh, Keneff need to fix the street and the, and the alleys. Uh, I think most of them are done, um, you know, from the fire department to the high school, that's considered done. And it's a commercial, uh, business district. So we want to get those alleys done. That way we cover all the commercial, uh, districts, uh, the main streets. And I, I heard that Councilman Samiri went to Lansing last week. I don't know what he got for us, so.
We get, we get something.
We did something, all right.
You're going to cover the whole, the whole, I didn't worry.
Rumor is that, uh, Councilman.
Councilman, you don't take all councilmen with you, so we should get, we'll get more money.
Maybe he'll turn you down.
Yeah, I heard he has some.
Nobody got a spare time to go Lansing, find out something to build the city. Mr. Chair.
Yes, Hassan. I like working, even if I spend from my pocket, I want to see the city is beautiful.
First, uh, we have to understand the budget, the budget. If we under, you want to understand the budget. Lots of rumor, last, uh, year, all the alley money came from the, uh, the government fund. Okay? It was not true. Some people was lying. It was not 100% came from the, the Michigan State. No, it was our money, we've been expanding. We did expand the alley as Joseph Campo, we did Aliyah, we did Alisla. We made the pilot program, bring the money from general fund to expand that alley, and it was done. So this is the money, it's coming from the general fund. It's not from the, from the grant money. So if anybody says coming the grant money, there is the line number one. So, uh, the, the construction, Mr. Hennessy, the, all the alley has been done. It was by, inspected by you and the reforms basis, which one is very bad? And we did the schedule like one, two, three, that's all we're doing.
That's correct. We went through a Pacer analysis.
Yes. So this is the one, what you think, if the councilman requesting, that's what you're doing, or this is the one necessary to do, it, that's what you're doing.
The advantage of doing this alley right now is because we have Keneff going under construction soon.
Soon, yeah.
So to try, that's going to be a train wreck, and we're going to get a lot of complaints as that's getting done. So at least we're going to have, with those businesses there, have a nice alley to ride in and out of and be able to.
Which has been a problem that we've had, is this is the final segment of Keneff to get constructed. Councilman Hassan, in answer to your question, I do not believe this alley is coinciding with the Pacer study. Um, but.
That's what I say.
It is certainly a bad alley. Uh, I will say that. Um, it is probably a very good alley to do, considering that Keneff is about to be torn up pretty badly, and that this will provide added relief towards the residents and the flow of traffic, considering we are about to do Keneff. But to, to direct answer to your question, that this is not following the Pacer study.
Thank you. So the other, also, if we follow the, based on, there's another alley also more important than this one. But you convinced me to expand the $300,000 now over to what you're saying, John, to, because I'm doing the other construction, it's the main street. So that's why they can bypass, and, and that's the necessary to do it. So that's why I'm voting for you. Otherwise, no. It was not necessary to do it from the face.
And I would like to point out, Councilman, that Keneff is being funded about 81.5% from the state of Michigan through a grant for the reconstruction of Keneff.
Not this one.
Not this one, but the roadway.
I want people to know, it's came from the grant money. It's coming from the taxpayer money. That's all.
All right. So, so the other thing that's related to this one, which is very disturbing, that we were expecting Keneff to, you know, construction to start soon, and now he's telling me that there's a delay from the state. We need to find out why. Because we've been telling people, based on what you guys told us before the construction would start soon.
Now, can we answer that, is all?
Yeah, I can jump into that.
They got to say from bottom up.
Yeah, and because this is being funded through the state of Michigan's, uh, federal aid program, which is kind of the final, uh, leg of Keneff to be constructed within there. It has to go through what's known as the SHPO process, which is State Historic Preservation Office, and they have to sign off on that. And because that, the portion on Joseph Campo is a designated historic district through there, from Joseph Campo east to the alley and Joseph Campo west to the alley, it is taking them, and I think they've been besieged actually in review processes. They were supposed to be, uh, bid out, MDOT is controlling the bid. We're not controlling the bid. They're the ones that actually issue that. If we were funding this project with our own funds, it would be done through Act 51. We don't have to go through the SHPO process. The state of Michigan has put a cumbersome layer in their funding to things, and it is delaying it through there. So we're going to look at some other options to put maybe a skin coat on Keneff with our contractor to, if, um, because it likely won't be bid until September or, uh, September, August or September.
So is there a way we can follow up with them?
Yes.
Yeah, we, it's, it's unfortunately, the state of Michigan has completely road blocked us, and it's out of our control. So the only thing we're going to be able to do now is put a temporary, as John said, patch on it until they get moving on us. We are, they're mercy on us.
We need to follow up because this is causing.
You know, we can certainly follow up with the SHPO office. I think they've gotten a tremendous amount of complaints. Uh, we were, I was at a project this morning in Dearborn, and they've got delayed from the same situation. So it's not only our community that's suffering from this. Yeah, originally, we want to start this, and it was April. Yeah. When we had it targeted.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
Final signals are not done yet, right? You asked, he's saying it is under the review process of.
The SHPO portion is. The, the engineering plans are all approved by the state. We have the county permit. We have everything. What they're looking at is whether or not there's any historical, um, things that have to be considered while rebuilding this road, and they're doing, it's above-ground architect, archaeological review process is what they're doing.
Okay, so here's the historical thing they're looking at. There is the one making something only about me, oh, it's, and not that, they're going to come, oh, it's not that important, not that historical. I think I have some of that, I'm not that good. Okay, so we don't want to wait for that long, but we don't want to do other thing. It's waiting for their money, their money. Somebody have to have that, because you are the, our lobbyist.
Yes.
So you have to strongly talk to them. You have to make them some historical things to make them convince, yeah, this is the historical.
It's utterly ridiculous that we even go through this archaeological review candidly. We're just removing a street that's present through there and replacing it, you know? It's not like.
Not widening it or?
We're, we're not digging architectural, you know, in, in a field where we, you know, there could be some type of historical monument of some sort. But we will, believe me, um, the city manager has made it very, very clear, the mayor, this is a high priority for us. We've been pounding their, the drums on the, on the issue here, and, um, we'll do everything we can and see if we can't push them along. Uh, but, but, you know, we may want to look at a skin coat, as we talked about, because it might be better to start the project in the spring as a fresh start, as opposed to maybe in the fall through there. But we'll have to look at it. We'll see what it is.
Not if we can help it.
No, I understand.
Okay, first, trying to find out now, start from the.
Well, certainly, certainly, Councilman. And we'll be back, in, back in front of you, keep you posted.
No problem.
Yeah, we have to make it clear to them that based on what they told us, we have informed our residents, and now they changed the timeline, which makes us look like we like, I mean, we, we have to act on this.
Well, all of us have, like, we did those, led service leads in anticipation of this being done through there. So we put the underground in first before we put the, the surface layer on there. We would have delayed that had that happened. But we, we understand the severity of it, the priority of it, and we will certainly do our best.
So we can, all right, we can go ahead and vote.
Uh, Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-69 approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2024-70, approving award of 2024 alley reconstruction design and construction services.
Motion.
This is simply the companion, uh, resolution for Hennessy to manage it.
Can we vote?
Yeah.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes, you want to go?
Councilman Mahmoud. Councilman Musa. Councilman El Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Did you want to discuss before it's approved? We go through the same thing every time. Count, Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-70 approved.
All right, thank you. The next one is Resolution 2024-71, partial street directional change, closing, approval of traffic control orders. Get our open?
Motion, yes.
And everyone, they want to explain to us?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, uh, we had a request from, uh, business that is going in at that location, um, to change the direction of the street, just to the alley there, um, to better utilize the parking lot there. Um, and we subsequently requested the police department, um, and also we checked with the fire department to see if there was any prohibitions against that. Um, and there's not. And, uh, Jamil, did you want to speak on your study over there at all?
We did, we did the study to see if there was any, uh, traffic related issues or, we were primarily concerned, safety of residents, people crossing as well as traffic coming through the alleyway. But we did find that there was, uh, multiple alleys, which is similarly constructed in the, in the same hand crammick. Uh, we did confer with the fire department, who said that we want to make sure the fire truck can actually make that turn. Uh, so, uh, they were okay. They said that, you know, they gave their, their feedback and they said that was fine. And I think it improved not only the business, but also, I think, both businesses, because you're going to open up the flow there. So it, um, yeah, I mean, as far as, as far as traffic concern, um, it's, it's, I, I do believe it's not going to be an issue. I did.
So we'll just, maybe basically the parking there as well, um, and change the direction just to the alley there and make it to the alley two-way, so that the traffic can flow both ways. And just, uh, basically allow the traffic to go into the parking lot either way, a lot simpler.
Okay, well, which business is that? Is it the new coffee shop?
New coffee shop going in, uh, which was also, um, a concern of a business owner that was coming to us, that was initially having problems because they preliminarily wanted to get some plans to cut a cutout, um, on Joseph Campo there, which would have been very, very difficult for them to do, dealing with the county to do that, and we knew that. So our suggestion to them was to essentially just request council to change the direction there, which is essentially very simple for council to do, rather than fight with the county for a year to do a cutout on Joseph Campo.
All right, and we have, uh, similar streets, you know, bi-directional, uh, way. Uh, this is something to, I, I think that this, uh, business person is, is planning to expand and open more businesses, or, you know, he, he's, he's starting a franchise. So, um, he, he also owns some pharmacies in Abqan. So he been investing in Abqan. Uh, it's not Abqan president, but he, he been investing in Abqan for a while. So.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
It is, it is very good, good step. Um, what I see, uh, at the carpenter and Joseph Campo, at the doctor office, it's, it's very hard to get the, the car from the Wayne County. So it's the excess alley, and that alley we have done earlier, all the patient is going there, it's no problem right now. So. So those kinds of stuff is very good, good for the business, good for the city. I am okay with that.
All right. Any part of the discussion? All right, go ahead and.
Let's get a vote.
Don't announce it. You'll get, you'll. Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-71 approved.
All right, thank you. Next one is Resolution 2024-72 approving acceptance of the State of Michigan Hazard mitigation assistance grant agreement for fiscal year 2022, building resilient infrastructure in communities.
Okay, second.
Mr. Mayor, I am happy to report that this is the acceptance of the Goodson grant that we have been waiting for, for a very, very, very long time. I have the Johns here, I talked about it, but this is the major step in to reduction of the flooding of the south end of Hamtramck. It is the ripping out of Goodson in its entirety to connect the, connect the sewer from basically Lumpkin to Joseph Campo. This is a huge, huge win for the city of Hamtramck and a very big reconstruction and a lot of free money from the federal government. I'll let John elaborate.
Yeah, I see some Goodson residents here, so.
Yeah, yeah, so this is, I think I've been working on this myself for about six years. So it justifies that perseverance does prevail, you know, but we have about $9.96 million from FEMA for this and that's layered with $2.7 million for the water and the road. We're going to have a brand new infrastructure all up and down Goodson from Lumpkin to Joseph Campo, and it involves basically building about a 20-foot chamber on the Lumpkin sewer that will divert excess runoff down Goodson to the chamber that was constructed in Joseph Campo, then we're extending that line also up to Holbrook, which will take care of some of the areas in the northeast just south of Holbrook and that portion of town through there. And I think this is actually the first BRICS grants awarded in the state of Michigan, to be candid, and it's taken us a long, long time. I know the council's very familiar with me bringing up Goodson and I was kind of like the boy who never really could get it there, but, you know, I'm happy to say that we were able to deliver it. It's, it's been a great, great, great win for the community. So it's about $12.5 million project that we've got. We've got 10 from the feds and then two and a half from the state. So I'm happy that, I hope that the council accepts that.
So, Chair.
Yes.
Only I can say about that time, and you didn't do it.
Thank you.
So someone are expecting to start?
We are out to bid actually right now that mayor and council may know that we were actually, we were under a contract for the loan for the state of Michigan as a secondary if we were not able to secure this grant. And we had to kind of pressure the federal government, FEMA, to kind of make a decision on this, kind of just similar with MDOT that we were referring to. Bids are coming in in about, I think, right up to the 4th, I think. We put an addendum out, we're going to start this fall. We've got all our permits in place through there and it's, it's going to be great to see.
All right, that's great.
Yes.
I'm happy to see that one is going to be done, but I'm happy to, if you fix the alley before.
It did take, you know what, I have to tell you, they did take some of our alley funding.
If you fix, if you fix both alley, it's going to be good shape, you're going to save a lot of problem. How they gonna do the people, how they gonna partner?
Yeah, we're going to have to have community meetings.
We can fix the alley, both sides.
Yeah.
Between Goodson and FEMA, between Goodson and Dumpy. That will give us safe time with that one. I don't remember this one against one of the state. Five million, they go double.
When are you going back to Lansing?
[laughing]. It's September. And that's too late.
But we, well, we will definitely have community outreach meetings with the community.
They're gonna cost a lot.
What's your definition of a lot?
They're gonna cost a lot, they're gonna save a lot, they're gonna save a lot. All right. Stay there for three days.
Bring the lonely back.
All right, that's the good news.
Councilman El Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-72 approved.
Thank you.
Next one is the resolution that we moved from the consent agenda, which is Resolution 2024 dash, it will be now.
Sixty-six. It's still sixty-six, but G.
It's still sixty-six.
Sixty-six G, approving excuse absences of Councilman Khalid Rafai and Mahdassin Sartman.
I'd like to offer the resolution.
Second.
Who was the second?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Hassan.
So we have the, resolution is here with the absence. Normally, those kinds of absence, we do, we know we are going, we do before we're going, we bring the resolution to approve it. But there is the limitation, Mr. Chair. Anything we do, we do have limitation because I'm going, I'm coming back. When I'm coming back, I know that. It could be late one or two weeks maximum. It cannot be unlimited. So, so that was the issue I brought it from long time, Charter 6-11 saying us five consecutive.
Can we read it?
Yes, please.
Section 611 Declaration of vacancy in office causes enumerated. If any person elected to office shall die, resign, move from the city, be removed from the office, or be convicted of a felony, or if any councilperson or mayor shall absent himself from council meetings for a period of five unexcused consecutive regular meetings or 10 unexcused regular meetings within a year without good insufficient reason and without the permission of the council, the office held by such person shall be deemed to be vacant.
Yeah, very clear, there is the last line and council permission. So all the council, we told these two gentlemen, yeah, no problem. We said verbally, but the documentary, we never approve it. We never say yes, nothing in the file. The excuse what they have right now is sitting over there as an excuse. It make a cause, make a big problem after two more, after, after today, one more council if they absent, five consecutive unexcused absences and eliminate the position right there. That's why it's nothing personal. I know Mr. Khalid Rafai, he watching, it's nothing personal. It is only to bring the resolution to make it correct ourselves and, and the respect the charter. So it's my opinion, Mr. Mayor, I cannot approve the unlimited. While councilmen brought the discussion that time, I already spoke that time, we not gonna approve unlimited, we have to have timing. So if this resolution, if I consider, I like to amend it after all the council member discussion, I cannot, this council, this resolution showing here by the, the absence as, as excuse until their return. Example, I go Bangladesh, I'm planning to December, and I changed my mind, I'm not gonna come back from Bangladesh. Maybe I go Canada, no more, you America. So I'm not saying nothing to nobody. My call is given the option to play the game or stay there unlimited than suffering who, other four council members suffering. I supposed to go to the doctor. Appointment today, I have to go doctor, I already discussed with the mayor Amergalip, my health, my leg issue. I cannot go, if I go, we don't have the coram and I, I cannot approve all this resolution. So I have to come, it's on pressure to us. So I understand one council member father died, one council member has the family issue, but again, and after discussion, I like to amend the resolution, it's not going until their return, it's going to be up to this council meeting.
Well, can I please add something?
Well, I'll just discuss.
I know, but it would, the reason the resolution is five absences, so that's why the resolution came out now, because the next one will be five for them, right? Did any of them reach five yet?
Well, Ms. Clark, so let me give you another example. Her mayor Mayaski going to Poland, before she go, she took that approval for three. So we can go the way. So it's not the five, one, two, three, I can serve four of them unexcused, it's up to us. But the, right now, the resolution came today, as of today, how many excuse I can approve that or I only can say, I'm gonna approve only three as a excuse, rest of the, I'm gonna leave as an excuse, still there are five more unexcused. There is the, if it is six, three month, three and two month, five month. If I get elected for this position, six month I stay Bangladesh or other country, six month here, what residents expect from me? I promise to the resident, I will serve you best I can, and it's not the best I can stay away from here.
Right here, thank you.
Okay, so, so I want to councilmen, other councilmen speak about it and then I'm gonna do the, to amend the resolution later on. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Well, I think, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think Mr. Hassan, whatever you say, this kind is true because our commitment to serve the community and, I mean, we all have some do and don'ts and even yourself too, but you make the whole effort to be here every council meeting, you never absent any. So, but things happen, you know, we all want this some time off, but unlimited or like getting off way from six, seven months is not acceptable, I think. And we should make an amendment and make it more feasible, you know, what fair for them and what fair for the community.
Yeah, what did they say, the charter, when people they use excuse is not excuse for a last time?
Charter said five unexcused consecutive, like one after one. One after the other.
Yeah, so, why didn't, why didn't use that one before last years? Some, last years people they use offer six or seven, nobody is speaking. Now, why they speak right now?
Mr. Chair.
Why they just mention, they make the complaint right now?
Mr. Chair, I have explanation.
Yeah, Councilman.
So council member have to understand first of all, what is the consecutive? What is the charter? Last year, I got six absence, including COVID. It was not three consecutive either, two consecutive and I had total six. You got to read the charter to understand the charter, you have a 10 unexcused, 10 unexcused within 12 month. So that's, first you have to learn that, then you have to serve what had previously happened, what happened. Second, it was never more than two consecutive, okay? So that's why we are talking right now, it's not intentionally, try to help them. If, if we don't, excuse me, if we don't approve today, any council, anybody from the Hamtramck resident, go to the court, submit the petition, your honor, this is the issue, I want this position to be empty, then, hey, you did not excuse it, you left as an excuse, according to charter, you over. I try to help them, not the other things. So, Mr. Chair, if you don't have anybody to speak, I like to amend it.
No, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Councilman, to bring this resolution for discussion. It is nothing personal. Charter put us the force to follow the rules. Most Assasin Satman and Khalid Rafai, both are good friends, they are overseas, but we have, everybody who are elected, we committed to serve the community, committed to serve the people and best of our ability. So now the issue come up on the charter, not mayor bring it or myself or X, Y, Z, is the charter bring the issue consecutive five, five medium, positive, right? You cannot do those things. So it is really, really tight situation, I don't know how to, we're gonna accomplish it. We don't want to help anybody else or we do not want injustice for anybody else, but again, same thing, Kassim Hassan is the most experienced guy, I respect him, and if any other issue coming from the community, after all, you know, everybody gonna get the, get the suffer. And last, one of the council meeting, unfortunately, we missed it also, the whole community is watching those things, but we do not want to get another issue come up there, but I'm asking mayor and all of my colleagues, see if you can find any solution there to solve this issue.
Well, I think from now on, just to be on the safe side, when, I think Councilman Rafai mentioned that he asked the city manager to put the resolution as soon as he left, but it took too long until now. So in the future, maybe it's safer for anyone to put the resolution before they leave so we can discuss that and why they are here. I don't think Councilman Rafai would stay another three months from now, I mean, he probably will come back soon. He has an interview soon.
Yes.
At the embassy, so hopefully he will be here soon. Five consecutive unexcused absences is almost three months, so I, I don't think he will stay that long, but it's up to you guys, whatever you want to, if you want to amend this resolution, at this point, it's open-ended, doesn't specify the number of excuse absences. So it's up to the council what to do.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Nothing in the world open, so there is a word revisit. So I like to amend the resolution today, resolution number 2024-66, the wording for the last sentence, absent as excuse until this council meeting as of today, 25th June 2024.
Do we have a support for his amendment?
So, Mr. Councilman.
There would have to be a second and then a discussion. Do you motion, do you motion, the councilman?
Uh, well.
I think the proposal.
I just proposing.
I'm sorry.
I'm proposing.
No, no, that's fine. Yeah. So, Mr. Chair, so, Mr. Councilman, so you're saying up to now, they're approved, they still have five more to go, right?
Yeah, I just, I'm just putting the floor.
That's what I'm saying, this is.
Yes, yes, you're right.
All right, that's, that's not a bad idea. I mean, they still give them another five minutes, as you said.
Yeah, but this one, almost.
And, well, God forbid, anything happens to anyone, any of us get sick, you know, council has to run, city has to run, so we can't give unlimited anything to anyone, not neither for myself. So I think we should have some sort of restriction that makes sure people take it seriously. In future, if somebody thinks that I don't have those kinds of time, then don't run for the position or like excuse yourself and, you know, there are always chances come. It's not the one times election happens, you know, every two years we having the election in the city of Hamtramck. So I think we should have a clause that'll save our city from absence and other hand, you know, people need to have some time off, they can have the time off.
So just to make it clear, Councilman Hassan, you want to amend it to excuse them for the absences until now?
Yeah.
They're making four excuse.
Four excuse.
And then.
Rest of them will start as an excuse or revisit or another resolution under the circumstances. So as of today and previous, all those up to today, we like to make the excuse and give the, our call it good fear. I can say no, I only gonna do the two excuse, rest of them I can leave it unexcused. If I have a two vote, reservation will pass, but I will not go in there. Thank you, Mr. Muwiddh Mahmud. We'll try to make the, save our city, save our constitution, save our criticism. Newspaper, please read it what they said. So I try to prevent all of us, that's all. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend, like, as I discussed.
Make a motion now, probably.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on.
No, amend, I think we have to.
We gotta make a motion to amend.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to amend the resolution number 2024-66.
Finish, please. I need you to say to change their return to today's date.
Yeah, today's date. As of today. As of today, what is the head, all count as excuse. After today, the rest of that will be unexcused.
Or.
Or.
Revisit. I think after, whenever anybody is absent, the one day that you come in and one person is absent, make an addition to quote of.
Yes, yes, every time.
That's how it should be.
Yep.
Okay, so I need now a second, please.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah.
I think.
Now, we need to vote to approve the amendment and then vote to approve the resolution. So I need a motion, I'm sorry, so we can vote on this.
Amendment.
Amendment.
Um, Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Uh, yes.
Councilman Houd.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution, I'm sorry, the amendment.
It starts.
No, hold on, please. Motion to change their return to today's date was approved. Now I need a motion to.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion for resolution two zero two four dash six six as amended.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that? I think we already discussed enough.
Councilman El Samiri.
Uh, yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution, amended resolution twenty twenty four, to change the group.
All right, thank you. And with that, we come to the end of the new business. And we move to the reports, and we start with the mayor's report. I don't have much to say, but I wanna take this opportunity to thank everyone who attended today. We would like to see you all the time here in City Council. I mean, it's good to see public engagement with the government, to know what you guys are concerned about, and it's good to see you here. Um, I wanna say also, Eid Mubarak to all of you. Uh, last week, we attended couple Eid festivals here in Hamtramck. It was very good to bring, you know, these festivals to Hamtramck. Uh, biggest one was organized by Masjid Muad and public school space there at the park, which was for three days, it was very good, uh, total success. Thousands of community members, kids and families attended, and even from other cities. I mean, I was there for a couple of days with the police chief and city manager and some other council members there. Uh, so we would like to see more of these activities. Also attended the Eid festival organized by Al Fanaah Masjid, which was also a good festival in McDougall Street behind Carpenter, next to Masjid Al Fanaah. Um, at the same time of the first day of the, of the festival, which was the Juneteenth, we had a couple event in the city. Um, one of them is the annual Hamtramck Juneteenth Festival that's organized by some members of the community, which, uh, we, I personally received an invitation to be the, the speaker for the event and to welcome the visitors. Um, at the same time, there was another event that's new to the city, and it was, uh, took place in the historic stadium. And there was a public announcement here, as we remember in this council meeting, public announcement that there will be a game and an event. Nothing was mentioned that the governor would be there. And we were surprised that the governor was there. Um, I wasn't notified, the city administration wasn't notified. Um, and then we saw people accusing us of not, you know, receiving, welcoming the governor in Hamtramck. The governor was supposed to let us know. He called one of the state reps, telling them, oh, the mayor wasn't there to welcome me. Well, did you tell me that you are coming, so I can welcome you? Or a guest does not just go to someone without notify. So another complaint from the office of the governor said that for security reason, they didn't tell anyone, even our police chief, didn't know until thirty minute or whatever, when she was there, you found out that she was there. So for security reason, you have to coordinate and collaborate with our police department, so we can take care of you here. Uh, another member of the community was informed that they sent us an invitation seven weeks ago or so. To who, I don't know. They said, oh, maybe to the mayor, to the council, to the city manager, to the clerk. None of them confirmed that they received any invitation. They didn't specify the date, they said. They said, hoping that they will follow up and tell you when exactly she is coming. So they failed to follow. Well, we didn't receive any invitation anyway. So just to make it clear, there was a public announcements here. I wasn't invited as a speaker or anything. Two days before that, I was invited to cut the ribbon of playground by Hamtramck Public Conservancy, Park Conservancy. I was invited personally, and I went there. But to make a public announcement here, expect me to be there when I have other commitment at the same time, that I was invited personally to speak at, which one I should give the priority to the people who came to my office, invited me to speak and to welcome them and to be part of the festival. But if it's just public announcement, that, that's for the public, and I'm one of the public. Uh, so I felt that I should have prioritized the annual Juneteenth event. And I wanna take this opportunity to thank Veronica Smith for inviting me personally to speak and to be part of that event. So I just wanted to make it clear to our community that, yes, I did know that the governor was coming. I don't know whose fault was it. She didn't notify us, her office didn't notify any of our city members. Uh, so, uh, she complained that I was mad to someone, and she's, she thinks that I should have been there welcoming. Didn't, like, we don't have other commitments to do in the city. Uh, we can't attend all the events at the same time. Uh, we have, you know, a lot of community events, we have jobs, we have families, so you have to let me know, so I can prioritize and be there for you, to receive you. Uh, I don't know if there's anything intentional behind that, if there's any political precautions. You know, people are afraid these days to take pictures with me. They think I'm troublemaker, so they can lose us, they may lose some support here or there, which I understand that, but if you come to my city and you want me to receive you, let me know ahead of time. That's as easy as it is. And don't tell me, oh, there was a public announcement about this event, yes? Yes, there was a public announcement about, there's public announcement about many events. But did I know that the governor would be coming? No. Did they mention a public announcement? No. So it's, I don't think we are responsible or accountable for that. And as a respect for the city leadership, I think in the future, this disconnect has to be solved. Uh, uh, you know, we have to be notified about that, such events, so we can do the right thing. Otherwise, we can be blamed for that. Not that we care about anyone other than our residents here when it comes to serving them, but as a respect, I mean, for our leadership, for the city leadership, we should be, people should follow the right protocol that they follow in every other city. So with that, I think I don't have anything else to say, but I will transfer now to Mr. Mayor Potem, if he has anything to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, especially you say, whatever I say, you already say those things. Uh, community people, they accuse us also, personally, myself too. Your governor, state of governor came into Hamtramck, and none of the elected official has been welcomed or attend her this time. So I'm a hundred percent agree with Mr. Mayor. So if we do know, we make ourselves available for our governor. We have not helped the governor. But if we don't know, yes, if we don't know, could be governor office gonna hide something or ignore us, or somebody, if they're gonna properly inform us, somebody hiding this information from us. So we're gonna find out those things. We do not want to get any chaos or collapse to the state level. So we wanna work together without the governor, and everybody is there also. Uh, thank you, our, all those residents and all those older shah, brother Faisal, everybody's coming to join with us. And yes, if we look at coming here, we get more, we get more alert and we get more power to do so for, for the community. And luckily, lastly, I thanks to my colleague, my friend, Asomari. At least he tried to go to Lansing, digging something for us, bring something for us. He bring something, at least he tried. He asked me, and I proposed, can you go the next day? Or why don't you inform me before? I'm a management, I'm doing something else to manage. But at least he goes there, he bring something for me. Thank you, Mr. Councilman, my colleague. And thank you all of the residents here and abroad, Eid Mubarak, with festival last week. Thank you, Salaam alaikum.
Thank you. Salaam. Well, now we move to the city council report. Anyone wants to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thanks to audience, thank you to everybody for show up. Uh, I thought that was a little confusing about the governor, you know, we have a governor, she's doing a great job for the state of Michigan, uh, and one of the powerful lady. And we felt that, you know, we get negligence, not from her side, probably other, other sides of this, you know, angles that make us feel insulted, make us feel involved. But we still love you, we want you to welcome, you know, a great city of Hamtramck. You know, it'll be our privilege to welcome you, but some reason, I don't know who dropped the ball, and we need to find this out, and Mr. Mayor say. I hope this not a political game to us to punish somehow, but, you know, hopefully, that's not the happens in future. And, uh, thank you all community to date their great Eid, you know, all together, it's a great very neat and clean Eid in our city. And, uh, one of the things that came out today about the speeding ticket, I completely understand, but our guardians need to be a little bit alert about our kids. I mean, they need to educate those kids. If anything happens, this goes against the family, whole family get torn. And one of the things, like, when cops giving ticket, people come out and say, all weekend, we're driving in Hamtramck, we're giving ticket left and right. And if they don't get issue enough ticket, then say, why they are not issuing the ticket? So we have an elected official, you know, it's really a bad position for us. Uh, we don't wanna bring anything too strict to the community. Uh, if that happens, and if this comes to our concern and regret, then we might have to, as Mr. Mayor mentioned, then we're gonna change some laws that make it more straight for the community. So please, you know, everybody to stay cautious and not to harm yourself and the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Hassan.
Uh, thank you, my all the leaders are here. Uh, we have to say something. Please take a little bit time to listen what we wanna say, what happening. So from two thousand two, from this area, we tried to make a one state rep. Brother Saleh Aljaim was the leader at that time to make the Shahapahamut Councilman. After that, a state rep, very close race, we lost it. So our history from two thousand two up to Abraham Ayash, we never get anybody. We had a strong voice, we have a strong competition. Two thousand twelve, I was very close race, and Abraham Ayash got it, and we are proud of him to be a majority leader. But the problem is here, if, if Michigan State Majority Leader don't know governor going to Hamtramck, there is the problem. And nobody gonna believe that he don't know. And I was in our city manager office, Abraham Ayash called that time city manager like two days before. So maybe that's, he did not pick up the, because he, me and him was talking some serious other business. So he was, uh, neglected us, with same elected official. So the thing is here, we around here over thirty thousand vote, just Detroit and Hamtramck. Over thousand, over thirty thousand vote, our people. So governor election, thirty thousand vote make a big difference. If you go the Hillary Clinton election, it was very close race. This area people make a big deal in the governor election and also presidential election. So we have to have the respect each other back. So, sorry to say, a state rep election, if somebody get elected, they always get three times, nobody bother them. My state rep, Abraham Ayash, two time elected, third time, he is gonna be automatically. That's why we, me and Asomari, will go, we apply for Wayne County Commissioner, did not apply for a state rep because our brother is there. So then last minute, he would draw the petition after three thirty, around four o'clock, never tell nobody. So after that, I cannot give up. From two thousand two to up to here, it is our right. I submit the petition as a right in candidate for a state rep. And last night, I had the email came from Michigan State, they accept my right in candidate. So I don't wanna give up, it has to be our name, okay, this is the community things. So we have to, we have to be worry about it. We have to, we have to be careful next time. If we elect me as a councilman, we have to worry about it. So I want you guys to, please, when you elect your next state rep, state senator, congressman, councilman, you have to think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Yes, Councilman, must, uh, wait.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone for all my resident, you know, leader in Hamtramck. And we came today to see the meeting, to follow up what we have, what we do. And last, last week, we go Lansing, we bring something to cover the budget for Hamtramck. And my Khalid, they, they speak for something a couple years when we do in Knif and behind Masjid Ali. We working together, me and him, to make the Barqar Lot in, in Knif from the fund balance. But in Masjid Ali, from the fund balance, only those, to those, oh, yeah. The other thing, we use it from the, from the state, all the black alley from the state, not from, from the fund balance. Now, our last, our last meeting, we were mentioned, the mayor, they mentioned, they don't have, uh, they don't wanna use money from the ground fund. That's when we, they still have something, they can use it for other thing. I said, we gonna find out how, keep this year is working to cover a, a black alley to fix it, make it good. We go to Lansing, we make something to cover the black alley, maybe gonna be his battle. And we bring something to build the building in DBS, they gonna make almost two million dollar. And working the state, state senate, they working for the fire truck. It's very important fire truck for the, the fire, is a good one. When I working for the city of Hamtramck, it's not a special business. I working for a special, for the resident and make it, make it, the Hamtramck, make it beautiful. If they ask something, I don't wanna make it back for a special business. I working hard to make the, the city beautiful and safe and make it better.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
If it's that easy to get money, we'll be sending you every week.
There is no money, there is no money.
I remember, this is, uh, this process used to happen in Yemen. Even when you need something, you will go one day to the capital, come back with a project and funds. But in America, it doesn't work that way, but thank you for your efforts.
It's work.
You know, you give us something, that's great, we'll send you again, uh, and again.
He's already, he's.
Yeah, yeah, he is, he is working hard. He's the only one who would go to Lansing, I know, spend some time there. So I, we thank you for all that. He called me from there, from, uh, the, you know, Majority Leader Ayash's office. He called me, and I spoke to him, and we thanked him for everything he is doing.
Mr. Chair.
Go back to the, to the election thing, I, right after the issue with the governor, I received that email from leader of that Democratic campaign, asking to meet with me. I was like, okay, what, do you think what you guys are doing to neglect Hamtramck, you still want me to meet with you?
Yeah, I need to add something.
So we were discussing that, if we should meet with them or not, but, uh, uh, if we get the respect for our community here, not only Hamtramck, we share the demographics with Hamtramck, Detroit, Warren, Durban, Durban Heights, Malvandale, all these cities. We have tens of thousands of votes, and I don't think we'll stay uncommitted for too long. So, uh, you know, whoever respects us and takes our concerns into consideration, we will vote for him. Uh, that, that's what the community believes in, and I think they, they trust us and, and they, they will listen to us when we decide. So, yes, Councilman Hassan, you still wanna say something?
Yeah, couple of seconds. So, so thing about it, Majority Leader taking some council member, not telling mayor, and it may. and if mayor go or cabinet go talk to somebody in Michigan State, is more reasonable and more fruitful or take somebody one and at the, they are bringing the money, that kinds of thing also, we have to think about it. That's all I want to say.
Alright, we've got to, you know, opponents here in the next election. So thank you, thank you for all what you do. So with that, we come to the end of the city council report. And we move back to the second round of public comment.
City Mayor?
He's on.
Ahmed Sharaf. My name is Ahmed Sharaf. I am a right activist and I work for the city, not against the city. So I'm going to speak a minute and two minute. Thank you, sir, for that comment, I'm supporting it anyway. And I'm here supporting and defending my rights and my kids' rights about the speeding tickets. And I'm demanding it as a resident, taxpayer. I respect what you guys say, but to be restrict, it's better. I move from city to another, from country to another. More laws and strict for the speed tickets that would make people behave and teach their kids not to speed. Last July, I get hit. I get a bill with now seventy thousand dollars. Mr. Mayor, are you going to pay that? Answer is no. So Mohammed, are you going to pay my bill? I don't think nobody will, nobody care. So I do care. Who's going to support my kids? I'm going to give that minutes for you guys. So I'm still moving with my broken legs because of that speed. I was at the arcan of the mosque praying. Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, with that, I mean, we always do our best. Remember, even if you have severe laws and regulations, not everybody follows that. We had an incident last week where one of our residents in Durban, Durban has severe penalties for speeding. He went there, he still was speeding seventy-five in a thirty-five mile per hour area. And police of Durban, in collaboration with our police, came to Hamtramck and towed his car. So regardless of passing severe penalties, some people will still violate. We cannot, you know, we have drunk drivers, you have people who tax and drive. So you will never be able to prevent all the accidents and crimes. I mean, it's still going to happen, even if you say a thousand dollars for, you know, speed, ten, ten miles per hour over speed limit. Still, you will see some, you know, irresponsible drivers, we call them.
Some is better than all.
I know, we will work on that, but I'm just saying, you can't just say, I was about an accident, you will be responsible because you didn't pass a resolution to prevent that. That's not logical. We still have people who drink and drives, tax and drives irresponsibly. And no matter what the penalties are, they will still be some issues. But we will do our best to correct this. This is one of our priorities. But unfortunately, some people keep distracting us with less important issues and they consume so much of our time. We want to focus on these things. We are doing our best to, you know, prevent these issues from the city, keep the city clean, keep our environment friendly and welcoming to everyone. And I think we still way better than a lot of cities. I mean, we see, we hear some cities with severe penalties for speeding and we hear every month, somebody got killed. A motorcyclist got, you know, killed. We hear it, we watch, you know, the social media and some, some of them are from our community, I'm for sure. We heard about some Yemenis got, you know, got killed because they were speeding in a city where there's severe punishment for overspeeding. In Hamtramck, we have some issues with young kids, those teenagers who graduate from high school and stuff. And I spoke to the city manager and I, we had a chat with the police chief too. I told him this is a priority too. And we directed our city manager to talk to the police chief that this is a priority for us. Control the speed, clean the city and limit, you know, decrease the crime rate which is, it has decreased, except for that stolen car, because those criminals comes from outside of the city. And that's why we approve the cameras in the entrances of the city. It costs a lot of money, but it's very effective. I was told by the police that it's very effective and it helps. They caught so many people in the past, over the past month who stole cars. So these are good news and hopefully, I mean, we will take your suggestion into consideration and everyone else, and we will focus more on that. Hopefully, we'll come up with plans that will help us reduce these issues. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Councilman, Mr. Mayor Potem, you want to add something, go ahead.
So everybody is here, we start from our house. As a friend, I can teach my kids, if you know about speeding, you're going to hurt somebody else in other families. Your son or your family, you're going to hurt me too. So at least you're going to spread our family first. Tell your kids, they are, some kids, they will listen. Some kids could be, don't listen a hundred percent. So we can prevent them. We do our every single way to prevent and practice with them how to drive, follow the rules and speed. Last thing, I can say something. I feel really good last night. Me and my few other friends went to grocery store in, right here, what is it called? All Amay Big Store. Everybody shopping there, a lot of people shopping there. I first time I saw my police chief with the family shopping there. So I introducing them. So people feel very safe. The police chief shopping at eleven o'clock at night. Thank you, people feel safe because police around, his family lives in there. So all those, thank you, police chief. And he was really nice.
You should feel safe, he carry a gun. You should worry about.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So with that, no more public comment?
Bill Meyer.
Okay. Bill Meyer.
Hello, Bill Meyer from one in Hamtramck. So I asked a while back for the clerk if she could put on the door the rules for the comments, public comments, so that people know how many minutes they have and that they have to fill out a card.
It's there.
Is it there?
It's on the table.
On the table?
It's on the table right by the cards.
Okay, I don't know if anybody's reading it, okay, fine.
Even if people read it, they're going to come up to me and say, I can't read it.
Okay.
Or I didn't read.
Put it in ten, put it in ten language.
We have signs all over City Hall, they don't work.
Alright, so I was the chair of the Human Relations Commission for five years and we were the only commission, one of the only, that always had a corps at the meeting every month. And we turned in our minutes every month, one of the very few commissions that did it. And one of the reasons why is because we passed the rule in our commission, voted on unanimously by everybody in the commission, twelve members, that if you miss three meetings in a row, unexcused, you're going to be asked to leave. Because obviously, why would you want to be in the group if you don't even let us know? I mean, it takes thirty seconds to make a phone call or less to say, I can't make the meeting. That's all we wanted to ask people. So we immediately got rid of three or four people because they really didn't want to. And that caused problems in the city because it looked like we're kicking people out. But we had all voted to do that. And I think you have to, if you commit to a role, you have to, you have to figure ahead of time how to solve it. Maybe we could have a, an extra council member that comes in when somebody's missing. Anyways, I want to congratulate, thirty seconds. Okay.
You have another minute?
Oh, another minute. So I want to congratulate the city on getting twelve and a half million dollars. That's pretty good. Not many cities do that. And I don't know who's responsible for that, but we're going to have a party for that. And I want to mention, I know if you did it early, I wasn't here, but Amar Pizza. Did anybody mention that?
No.
Amar Pizza was named by the New York, was named by the New York Times as the top pizzeria in the country, one of the top twenty-two in the entire country. On Joseph Comfor and Miss Bangladeshi. Yes, they deserve their applause, Bangladeshi Pizzeria. And the pizzas are great. Okay, I want to mention once again, we spent a lot of time trying to fix the sound in this room so everybody can hear everything. Because back there, I can't hear people talking to this mic. And we couldn't hear the chief or the city clerk talking. Thirty seconds, okay. But luckily, the chief talks with his hand, so we could figure out that he was saying, go that way, that way. So we got that part. So one more thing, rules on politicking in public meetings. I don't know if you were supposed to be talking about campaigning and all that.
I wish I could give you more time on that topic. Thank you so much for mentioning that. Thank you.
Let's get antagonism away from the meetings when we're talking about candidates running for office.
Thank you.
Okay, anymore?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, with that, we come to, do we?
Motion to adjourn.
City manager, do you?
Public comment.
Oh, no, that's it. That was public comment.
So we motion to adjourn, I guess, and then, yeah.
Yeah, I motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Alright, Mayor.
It is eight fifty-one. Good night.